Come sit up.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, well.
Are those taken?
You should be, least of all, afraid of me. And I'm not afraid of you either.
Yeah, we won't bite too bad.
Thank you, thank you.
Even though we're victims.
Yes, well, me too.
You too, they got you too?
No, they did not get my tax return, but my computer got compromised, my identity got compromised.
They got me way back in February, I got the letter in February.
See?
Back in February too.
Yeah, 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 I mean, you are probably one of ten that got caught in February.
Yeah.
Before the breach occurred. So, yeah.
Had you already filed for a second?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes, I did.
My husband said, he goes, "We just should've changed our address and gotten a refund." We never get any money back.
That's funny. I thought there'd be more people here. Turn it on.
It's your live right now.
Oh, I am live. I am live?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I need this, and, but this does not serve as a microphone, right?
Right.
Okay.
You have this microphone.
Right, okay.
And it's on, apparently.
Okay. Let's just give it half a minute till it's actually two o'clock, and we'll get started. Okay, maybe no, maybe a half minute. It's two, okay, well, my watch is behind. All right, well, welcome to our town hall meeting, which, as you know, has taken on a whole other added agenda item that we had not anticipated. In fact, last week, when we had the first town hall meeting in Portsmouth, it was before we found out what had happened. And so, we are, I'm sorry, not Portsmouth, Chesapeake. And so, we're circling back to Chesapeake, particularly just on the data breach issue. And we have added other sessions as well. If, it doesn't matter to me how long the updates and the questions and answers that you have on the data breach. If it takes the two hours, that's all we're going to do. If we get to the other topics, we will come back to you on the other topics, which are accreditation and a number of really important items for you, for the college community as well. But the very first point is, to update you on what we know so far on the data breach. We'll give you a timeline. We'll show you the W-2 data form to tell you, to show you directly what information was uploaded. And as we're learning every day, there are different changes, different nuances, other added elements that were not even apparent in the beginning. And so, your continued reporting back to us, either on that form that has you identify if your tax returns have been breached, everything that we put out in Friday, accessing the credit reporting bureaus, I've done it. Go on it, it takes 15 minutes at most. You'll be guaranteed 90 days free credit monitoring until the contract that Phyllis is negotiating will kick in to give you continued free credit monitoring, so you don't have to pay for that. You know, please, 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 follow those steps that I communicated to you on Friday. I filed my reports. Doesn't take a lot of time to do that, but you should be taking those very easy precautionary measures. And I'll talk a little bit about your spouses. This is something new that we discovered. Two employees reported that their spouses. In addition, two, or, no, eight or 10 have reported that their tax returns were compromised in February, before our breach. So, there are multiple, multiple ways, apparently, how these scammers have come about. We have also learned so far through working with the state police, the FBI, and the IRS directly, that there has been a 400% increase in these kind of breaches refunds since last year. And they estimate that they're putting out between four and six billion, billion dollars in fraudulent tax returns, refunds. You know, and I'm not saying that because I want to diminish of what has happened to us, each of us, the identity theft that could possibly have occurred. And we know that as of this morning, 180, not 180, 108 employees of TCC have reported that their tax returns have been compromised, either through transcript that they had not requested, that the IRS sent to them, either through, when they filed their tax return, they found out that somebody had used their social security number to file a tax return. And now, this added element of spouses somehow may even be related to the military. So, there's, there's all kinds of different things that are going on. But we're telling you, as we see things happening, as we get information on a daily basis, and I ask that you trust us, that we're reporting to you as we're learning the facts. We're not putting out anything that's conjecture or supposition. We're putting out the facts as we know them, and they're changing every day. So, I really, I know it's hard for you in the situation you're in right now, when I use the word "trust" to say that you can trust us, and you can trust our security system. But, you know, we hope to do the very best, and the best we can do is to be as transparent and open to you at all times. All right? So, let's start with this, so this was the actual agenda. When we're in Chesapeake, it had, you know, number one, and then the rest of these. Obviously, we're going to spend whatever length of time it takes today to answer questions, to update you on the first part, and that's the employer data breach. So, big questions that came as soon as my memo went out on Friday. By the way, the moment we released it to you, we also released it to the media. And so, we wanted to be transparent. The media has contacted us. They were at the Norfolk session yesterday, I had an interview with them. Marion Andorfurin has interviewed with them. So, we have not prevented anybody from asking us questions, including the media services. So, who is affected? So, in that W-2 data file, every person who was employed in 2015, and that includes all full-time, wage, adjunct, and even student employees. So, if we employed a student worker, they were caught in this. So, here's a timeline. Some people have asked, "Well, how did this all happen?" So, we know now that on March 1st, the IRS issued an alert nationwide to agency heads at the state level. And that, that alert, when you, now that we have the alert, actually details the exact language of what the scammers use when they try to access datas, data files of different organizations. And so, so that was issued. However, we did not get that. It went to state agency heads. On March 2nd, our breach occurred. March 10, our help desk received an alert through the Moat helpline and put into the Moat Alert newsletter that there was a phishing scam going on. And if you read that, you may remember that there was one section on phishing, but not a lot of detail. Just simply be aware of phishing scams coming into your departments. On March 23rd, the IRS alert came from the system office to all of the community college presidents, which then had me investigate, or sent it to my executive staff, which then prompted them to investigate if something like that happened at TCC. And of course, within one day, or within that day, it was discovered that the breach had occurred on March 2nd. And so, then, we discovered it, and then Thursday and Friday, the team met continuously, began to outline what are the steps necessary, and put that forward to you in the email. And so, the FAQ, if you monitor it and look at it, it keeps changing, because we keep adding information. Things are getting clarified, other elements are getting added. If you have been breached and you know of it, please put it on that form, because that's the form we're sending up to the IRS and to the state police and the FBI for them to investigate. The IRS is actually now going back to all of those data files and looking at cross-reference checking and everything like that, so, you know. And we, right now, as I said, 108. As the tax season is going on, we expect that that will grow, but we have no idea, you know, how far. And then, so March 25, we emailed it to the college community and to the media. So, this is actually what was in that data file, because a lot of questions, you know, came. Well, did my data burst? Did my deductions? Did my bank information, did my deferred annuity account information get disclosed? It did not. So, what you have in the W-2 form is, is there a pointer? Oh, that doesn't work on this thing here, does it? Right, yes. So, you have the employee name. The critical thing that is, is the identity theft is your social security number. I am affected of it as well. It has your federal wages, your state wages. What does HI wages mean, Phyllis?
Health.
Oh, health insurance, okay. State wages, and then, and deductions and so forth. That is the information that was uploaded. And as I, I think I described it briefly, what happened was, an employee received a request from what looked like a legitimate email address of a supervisor. And within the scope of the supervisor's responsibility, it appeared legitimate for that supervisor to make that request. And then, the information was uploaded to a seemingly accurate supervisor's email address. And of course, we discovered that it went outside to the scammer. I'll give you, so it was a human error. I'll give you an example of how my computer was compromised, and the individual who received a request from supposedly me was vigilant and on guard. A request was made to an employee, asking for an international wire transfer to be initiated. And so, the employee called me and said, "Did you initiate that?" I said, "No." So, of course, we immediately reported that to OIS. They protected that information from, I mean, I think they, what did you guys do? Can you, you blocked that address or whatever. But it was the human intervention. And if, you know from our Moat training, every time when we go through the Moat training, one of the very first things is, most issues are attributed to human error. And that's exactly what happened here. The forensic investigation has not found any evidence of willful, intentionally uploading that data by the employees. So, it's a human error. There will be consequences, not just for the employee, but for all of us. Because now, what's happening because of this situation? The entire security protocol is being questioned. All of our policies, our procedures, our training for our employees is going to take a whole different course. There will be more and more restrictions on how we communicate. There are some technological possibilities that can help us. But the reason these higher education institutions are targeted is because we share data internally. So, the outcome of this is, that we'll be less able to share data internally, or it'll have to be somehow encrypted, or different security layers have to be put in place. But everybody will be affected by this. And again, like I said, it's a human error. The authorities will help us determine whether the violation that occurred rises to a level of having to take disciplinary measures. But at this point, I ask that you not go on a witch hunt and try to track down a human of our, one of our longtime employees, and ask that the person be fired or disciplined or whatever. It's a human error that occurred, but there will be actions that will come out of this. So, going on, so, again, like I said, there have been incidents that have been reported to us. At this point, we think about eight to 10, where employees have said their information was breached before March, when they filed their returns, they discovered that they had been breached already. Since then, we've discovered there's spouses, returns have been compromised. Two, in fact, one person from this campus and another employee from somewhere else, that their family information was compromised. Now, the forensic investigators, of course, are going to check to see how that occurred. Is it related to Anthem? Is it related to OPM, Officer Personnel Management? We've been told anecdotally, we haven't verified it, that military records have been compromised, and that there have been multiple ways on how to get that in. So, please, report information to us if we don't know about it. The nuances seem to be so intricate, that if you don't tell us what happened, then we can't report that to the IRS for them to initiate their investigative information. So, please, keep asking the questions, please, keep posting, and we'll, you know, research answers for you to the extent that you have identified, like I said, 108 people have identified that so far that have been compromised. And, you know, we'll do our very best to get that information forwarded, so investigation can happen. So, somebody asked a question on one of the FAQs, "Do we have a policy, privacy policy?" Yes, we do. Our privacy policy is 1104. We have a designated privacy officer, it's Christine Darmros-Malman. Get on our website, if you haven't already, review it and read it, and look at the protocol that's in there. And in talking with the VCCS, just yesterday, last evening, the vice chancellor said, you know, "We need to not only look at our policies, but our procedures." And the number one thing that they identified, which is exactly what our, I've asked, I've enlisted the help of our cybersecurity faculty at TCC to help with Ken Ballard and with the VCCS, to identify what are the priorities, what needs to happen right now in order to begin change in our Moat's operandi. And the number one thing that has been identified is, we need to change our training. Moat training by itself, obviously, is not getting to the level of specificity that is necessary. The IRS has described it as one of the most sophisticated scams that they've seen. And so, that's the first thing we're going to focus on. Then, the review of our policies, it'll be system-wide, so all the community colleges will be involved with this. And then, you know, the policies themselves, the technology itself. But, you know, like I said, there will be massive, massive changes coming along. But go online, take a look at that, print it out, and read it. So, questions that have not been asked, or that you are still wondering about as you are reading the FAQs online? Yes?
I was wondering, is there any way this time to tell how much additional damage can be done? Like, for instance, the spouses' social security numbers and names, that with information, apparently with the information that was set out, the scammers can go to the IRS and say, "Give me a transcript of this last year's or some years, 1040," and from that, they can get the spouses'.
Spouse.
All that social security number. I'm wondering, I got scammed last year, I didn't report it to the college because I didn't know where it came from.
Yeah. Were you an Anthem subscriber last year?
Yes, but I didn't know where it came from. At any rate, I'm not too worried about my tax refund either, because I've got a pin number and all that.
Sure.
But I'm wondering, what collateral damage can be done with this information?
Yeah. I can only speak to what we've been told in terms of the identity theft. What they do, apparently, with these social security numbers, they can sell them to other people, or, and they can use those to open up bank accounts, loans, and things like that. And that's why, you know, that very simple action of getting onto Equifax and all the other is to get your identity protection right away. I can't speak to how the scammers might have, or whether they obtained last year's, but that's something that we can add and have Christine and our folks research. I just don't know, you know, whether that actually has happened. One of the things I forgot to mention is, we are going to, Phyllis is negotiating, well, let me make the larger context. The VCCS has a service that they've subscribed to. It's kind of like an insurance policy on identity restoration, protection, and services. And it's called Beasley Corporation. They do this nationwide for colleges, universities, and private sector companies. And so, under those policies, there are certain services that we can request. One of them is the credit monitoring. And, you know, if you went on, online to secure that, you're guaranteed for the first 90 days, all right? You didn't have to pay for anything. What she's negotiating is the length of time that the continued free credit monitoring will be in place to protect your identity, because they may not be doing anything this year with your tax return. But are they going to use that information to open up other credit cards and things like that? Yeah. So, that's happening. In addition to that, by hopefully Friday, if not Monday, we will have a call center through that service with an 800 number. These are people that are trained, because they've done this for several years now, to answer questions. So, and that will be from, whenever it stands up, it'll be Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 9:00, and through the tax season, Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00, all right? And so, in addition to that, we will continue the FAQ, continue as if something happens to your return as you're filing it, please report it immediately on that three-question form, so we can send all of that up to the IRS for their investigation. And so, that's what we're working on here. What additional measures are you negotiating, Phyllis? Those are two primary ones. And so, I mean, really, the dialogue, you don't see what goes on in our lives since Thursday. Thursday. You know, all of our schedules have changed and that's our responsibility to research information for you, to be as transparent to you, to give you feedback, to help you, to protect you as much as possible. So these are two additional measures that we're taking and that will be available to you. Yes?
Are our previously employees being contacted or have they already been contacted?
We just initiated, since we don't have employee, previous employees' email addresses, we're sending letters to all previous employees and I don't know when. They have sent them. All right. So they've all gone out and I don't know what number, but it's quite a number of people. They have been notified by mail and it's basically the content of what I sent out in, on Friday directing them to take these measures. Yes? Yes, Gary?
Former faculty, we still have the Gmail accounts. That's how I was contacted about this by one of the faculty that just retired. He still has his Gmail account, the one that we get from the VCCS.
Okay. Yeah, but not every, I mean, on the faculty side maybe, and somebody who is an emeritus would have received the email from me on Friday, but wage employees typically don't have, have those provisions. So we decided it was best to send it out directly.
I actually have some student employees who did get it. I forwarded it to them.
Okay.
They don't have FTC.
Good. Right. But we do have their addresses from their employment records. Yeah, yeah. And those letters went out yesterday or the day before? Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Yes?
Were all former financial aid work studies also contacted through that same process? Are work study do not receive W-2?
Oh, they don't receive W-2? Okay.
We mentioned student employees. I didn't know if you were talking about.
No, student workers, yeah. But work study do not receive W-2. Yeah. Yes?
So if I have with me my IRS affidavit, I have not yet received my, or filed my taxes. So when I send this in now, are they going to say, oh, well, here's the fraud. You know, how will they accept my real one?
Boy. If you have not filed it yet. Somebody yesterday was in the Norfolk session and he said he filed his return just the other day. And because the information has already been told to the IRS of the data breach, he was contacted by the IRS and they gave him a PIN, much like what you said you got last year. You get a special PIN. So going forward, everybody will get a special PIN to file next year's taxes. But this was news to me. So yesterday, this one person at the Norfolk campus said that when he filed his taxes, the IRS said to him, we're giving you a PIN because you are caught in this data breach. And so I'm assuming that's what's going to happen. But again, that's something we can research and have the IRS verify.
And me? Yesterday, I was doing a lot of the research. Okay, so who at the Virginia Beach Police Department, you know, or was it Virginia Beach, since the breach probably happened in Norfolk?
Yeah.
And I think that that would have been really nice to have instead of just contacting the police department.
Yes, right.
And because it took me four phone calls, you know, being transferred to a different place. Oh, well.
Yeah. And that's an experience that somebody else shared with us. They live in Chesapeake, but the breach occurred, of course, in Norfolk. And Phyllis?
We've been trying to find out the answer to that, of course. And we just learned this afternoon that the IRS is going to take the lead on this case. We have a meeting with them tomorrow and that is one of the answers I hope to get.
Yeah.
According to Virginia Beach, you talked to Detective Bureau Economic Crimes.
But we'll get clarification.
Yeah. Well, when the first questions came to the local, the police departments, they referred them back to Norfolk. And then the state police, when we were working with them, they said, well, we really need to set up a regional task force. And now obviously it's gone beyond that. But that's an answer that, yes.
Should we also wait on the FTC until we have more information?
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah. Yes?
I have a hard inquiry on my credit report.
You have a what?
A hard inquiry on a loan or something. I didn't initiate it.
Okay.
I do not see where I can report this.
To your credit monitoring bureaus?
Do I have to report it with the college to you?
I would suggest, yeah. Put it down on that form.
Okay, even though it's my taxes inquiry without a problem, just to report it on the same form?
I tell you, I've told everybody that we've had the sessions with, be as vigilant as possible. We live in a different world. And so whatever protective measures you can take for yourself, your spouse, your family, go do it, even though it may not be at all related to this, but just simply recognize that, you know, everything is suspicious today. I would suggest that you do that. Yeah? Yeah, okay. Here, Christine? Or you got?
If you have questions like that, would you send that to me? I'll go ahead and send.
Did you all hear that?
Not your personal information.
Okay. The microphone's not working, I think.
If you would just send me your, don't send me your personal information, but just send me what happened and I will try to research that for you.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments here. You call this a human error, but I call this a policy error and I call this an error in judgment by our administrators. This is a terrible lack of judgment. Just as an example, I have a P card. I have a TCC credit card and I have to go through annual training each year and I had to actually go through it last night. Let me read you a statement from this with I knew well, never fax, email, even in an attachment or mail your full account number. I know that well. I've been trained. I've been audited twice with that P card. If my dean sent me an email and said, please send me your P card number, or if you sent me one, I would refuse because it's against policy. So somewhere, I am not worried about the lowly employee who made this mistake. I'm worried about the supervisor. So I don't worry about the deans or the vice presidents. Somewhere there is a vice president that they're over top of material management. And somehow over here in material management, they seem to understand that it's important to protect credit card numbers, but somehow they have another department over here. I don't know if it's payroll. I don't know if it's human resources, but over there, they don't seem to think it's important at all to protect our records. That is an incredible lack of judgment. You've got a person saying, over here, it's okay to do nothing. Over here, we have to be very careful. And so I think there should be consequences, not for the lowly employee, but for the lack of leadership and for the mistakes made by these administrators.
Okay. I hear you. I maintain it is a policy issue. When you read 1104, which was written in 2012, 2010, the updates, and that includes the Moat training. The Moat training, we've already discovered, does not capture the same information as whatever P card training. So there's a mismatch on the policy and the procedures and I agree with you totally. And, you know, the investigation is going on. Whether there will be consequences for other people, you know, I'm questioning myself. Should there be consequences for me? Right now, I think the best thing that I can do is be as vigilant and as transparent to you to help you. Resigning for me today probably wouldn't help you. But, you know, if that's what you're asking for, I'm certainly going to bring that to the attention of the chancellor.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
Okay. As far as the issue of spouses is concerned, it seems to me you're dancing around the issue. I want to know, are you going to protect my spouse's credit as well? Both of my returns were filed, my federal and state, they were both filed jointly. They have my wife's social security number on both of them. They do not have her W-2 information. They have no income information for my wife. So I'm assuming that they got the social security number information through what you gave them. So the question is, are you going to protect my wife's credit as well?
Well, based on the W-2 form, there would be no way for somebody to get your spouse's information.
They can use that information to ask for a copy of last year's return that has my wife's.
Do you know for sure that that's what happened?
Do you know they don't? Why don't you take the high road and do what's right?
Excuse me, sir. We are researching that. I do not know for a fact that that occurred. And as soon as we find out.
So I can't prove it, so it's on me because I can't prove it?
No, we are going to research the answer for you. But I do not know at this point, all I can tell you, I do not know whether that is what occurred in your case, how they got your wife's information. I do not know.
And if you never figure it out, it's on me. Apparently I caused the problem. Why don't you take the high road?
No, please, please.
Take the high road and do what's right.
Sir, I am not accusing anybody and saying, and I'm, please, I am not trying to obviate our responsibility or my responsibility. I'm not putting any burden on you. We're going to research the information and we'll get the information back to the college community. I don't know at this point what the answer is.
All I know is my wife's social security number is out there right now. And you're saying, well, we'll research it and maybe we'll take care of it if we can tie it to us. That sounds pretty lame.
No, no. That's not what I said and you're making interpretations in what I'm saying. Yes, ma'am?
We kind of had this conversation yesterday among some of our staff members and it came up about the spouses' information.
Okay.
Is it possible that we could use the same procedure to put an alert on our spouse?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I would, pardon me?
Or dependent, all dependent.
I would imagine, absolutely. Yes, yes. Yeah. I mean, as I said, the vigilance that you should be undertaking, that I've undertaken, is I just simply reported it and I said, I'm a possible victim of this crime and I want to be protected. And I got the acknowledgement from the credit bureaus.
So we would not be in violation if I wanted to go through the same link and use the same process to protect me?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, if you've gone through it, as you know, it asks you for verification that you are the right person. So if you're doing it for your spouse, then the spouse would be asked the question or you would be asking, being asked the question on your spouse's behalf, telephone numbers, addresses and whatever, five, six different questions to ask. But I don't think you would be in any violation of any policies whatsoever.
Okay, because there was a part on the form that asked if you were doing it for someone else. That's why I was asking, but I didn't know if we were allowed to do that.
I certainly would think that you should take whatever precaution you can take. Yes, ma'am?
Would it be in our best interest to go ahead and change our social security number?
I don't think you can change your social security number.
You are.
From what I'm told is that the only people that can get social security numbers changed are people under the witness protection plan.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Two people called up and they were told that.
Yeah. I don't think you can do that. Yeah, you were next.
Young lady over there said to send it to her. Who are you?
I'm so sorry. I'm Christine Damaros-Malman.
She's the privacy officer from whom you got the second communication? Yes. Yeah.
I was just wondering if you know how the scammers were filing the fraudulent returns, was it paper or was it online? And if it was online, are there certain online that they're using like ATR Block, TaxACT?
I don't know. Do we know that? No.
Going to have to find that out.
Yeah, the IRS would be the only one that would be in a possession to say that. But it's a question that we can ask. Yes?
I understood that we're protected for 90 days at this point.
Until, until the extension is approved. Yes, with the contract. Currently, Phyllis is negotiating that it's more than one year. Yeah.
And there's not going to be a difference between full-time and adjunct like there was with the Anthem thing? It's going to be equal across the board?
Everybody, yeah. All 3,100 employees. Yeah.
And that information should be out, I hope, sometime next week.
Okay. Did you hear that? Phyllis said that information should be out early sometime next week. Yes?
One of the things that kind of concerns me is the timeline at the beginning that you showed in the first slide. The state was notified on the first of March and it was three weeks later before we found out about that notification. Is anything we have looked at to kind of tighten up that timeline?
I don't think we have. I think right now we're in fire suppression mode, but that's something that I think the Attorney General's office that's been involved in the investigation should be addressing. But we actually physically checked the emails. We had OIS do that. Nothing came into the TCC line and I don't know when it came into the VCCS. You know, but that's something the Attorney General should be researching. Yes?
Is it known why they request the transcript?
Good question. I don't know.
We do not, I mean, one was requested by me. I did not request, I mean, I received one and I did not request it, but what I, what I'm doing here.
Can you use the phone, please, so that everybody can hear you?
What was the question?
The question was, how do we know or why did, why did the scammers request the transcript?
I have no idea. It happened to me. I got a transcript. I didn't request it, but someone just told me that in order to get a transcript, you have to have data birthed. They have to know, you have to submit that, so I don't know how they got that. Yeah. Yeah, Facebook or email or something.
I have another question. I am one of the students. I worked here while I'm finishing my degree at ODU and I've applied for jobs that required security clearances. My wife is in place to help protect those students as they start their careers and move forward.
That's a good question. I think we'll have to research that. I don't think it reaches a level of security violation for you.
If you go over $20,000 in debt, it can compromise it. And with this, I, someone mentioned Facebook. I had someone from Taiwan try to access my Facebook account. It got shut down immediately. They tried accessing one of my credit cards. It shut down immediately because Friday I called my, all my financial institutions and told them anything outside of Virginia Beach, do not, except no online. And so, like I said, if you go $20,000, that can affect your security clearances.
Okay. Yeah, it's something, that's something I don't know. Okay, she said that she is going to be applying for jobs and some of the jobs she's applying for require security clearance for the position that she's applying for and that apparently there is some area in there that if you're $20,000 in debt, then it jeopardizes the security clearance. Is that what I'm hearing? Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I don't know. Pardon me?
I don't see the relation.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I certainly understand her concern. I mean, I think at this point, you should be suspicious of anything. Monica?
Can we look into developing some sort of, I'm super loud already. Can we, my teacher boy, look into putting something in place, perhaps even in the Batten Centers, a resource where people could go to, to communally be able to use the TCC resources to complete this paperwork, to file things, to have someone there to answer questions? Because it seems like there are going to be myriad questions, you know, over 3,000 people who have questions and concerns. And also looking at an employee assistance program, something, place where people can have resources if they have hardships.
Right.
Based on the fact that if your returns are filed, there's going to be between 120, 180 days delay. And to deal, also in another aspect with some of the psychological issues that people are going through, because this is, whatever we determine consequence basis, it's a violation. And I think people are reacting to that.
Absolutely.
So when we're looking at supporting people beyond the credit monitoring, if we could have something in place for those aspects as well, as well, that would be.
Excellent point. I hadn't thought about the Batten Centers, using them as central points where people could go and get their forms filled out and everything. I think that's a great idea, actually. The other part on the EAP and the Employee Assistance Program, Beth has already been researching that and she can speak to that.
I've drafted an email, but it has not been sent out to the community yet. And included in that is information pertaining to retirement accounts, the Employee Assistance Program, because the Employee Assistance Program provides identity theft protection and credit monitoring. So there's one avenue. Those of you that were involved in Anthem and affected by the Anthem data breach last year, you have credit monitoring. That's covered for two years. So we're in the midst of that two-year window. We don't have to wait for next week to get information. We already have those services available if you have that insurance. And so, you know, we're just trying to get some additional information about a couple of other benefits and need to clarify a couple of points before we send that out to the community.
Right. But definitely, I mean, the emotional and psychological toll on our employees cannot be underestimated. And again, we've researched that and within a day or two, you should get an email from Beth to say, you know, here are these services that are available to you for free.
And I'm available if anyone wants to see me one-on-one afterwards, you know, information or questions, I can answer some of the benefit questions. or questions, I can answer some of the benefit questions.
You had, raised your hand.
Could you put the slide up that had the information that you-
The WTV?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Everywhere.
Phyllis, can you walk through, through this? Cause, please stand up.
I'm not sure I'm gonna know everything on there, but it's everything that, if you go home and you look at your W2, this is, this is language that's kind of unintelligible. If you go home and look at your W2 when you get home, that is exactly what was on this file. This, this file generated the W2 that you received. So I think I would direct you to go home and look at your W2 and you'll be better, be better understanding.
Well, can, can you expect, like, I don't know what IMP life means.
Impudent life. Beth?
So, the only microphone they're picking up on the livestream is that one?
Ah. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry.
So if you would just already state any questions that somebody asks?
Okay.
Okay. I'll do the best I can and then Beth, you can fill in.
Okay.
Well-known name, social security number. These are the federal and state college codes. Federal taxes, federal wages, social security, unim- what's that one?
It's related to social security.
Social security related. HI is-
That's the Medicare portion of social security.
Medicare portion of social security. State wages, state tax. Local, probably not applicable, but it's U S the other. I don't think that's applicable to us. Impudent life. Dependent care. Roth, Roth, 457th, third comp.
And then healthcare value, that's, that's new on the W2 as a result of the Affordable Care Act.
But again, go home, look at your W2, which has better language on it than this, but that was the exact file that created your W2.
Yeah. And again-
I'm sorry, I've gotten like a million texts. If, if Beth can repeat what she said, because she sent it into the microphone that didn't feed in the last tweet.
Oh, okay, sure.
And that would be his-
Yes, absolutely.
So what I, what I was saying earlier about the Employee Assistance Program, that is for all full-time employees covered by state health insurance. And if you are covered by state health insurance, you have the Employee Assistance Benefits, which do include identity theft protection, credit monitoring, there are, there's a legal component, financial assistance with all of that. Also, for those who have Anthem Health Insurance, last year with the Anthem data breach, there were services that were offered to employees. Employees had to take no action whatsoever for identity repair services. That was automatically provided. There are some additional services that if you registered through, and it's All Clear ID, I think is the company that Anthem is using for theirs. If you registered for that, you got additional services, things such as, I think there's identity theft insurance of like a million dollars coverage per individual. And, and credit monitoring is included as part of that. This will be provided in the email that I'll be sending out to the college community once I get clarification on a couple of questions that I still have about some of the other benefits that'll be mentioned in that email.
If we didn't do that at the time the Anthem had the breach, can we still do it? We have Anthem?
We're within a two-year window.
Beth, can you repeat her question?
Yes. Okay. So the question is, if you didn't sign up for the credit monitoring and the services through All Clear, can you still do that? Yes, you can. We're within a two-year window. The, that information was communicated to us in February of 2015, so we're within that two-year.
From the W2, can the criminals like get into your retirement account or do they just know how much money went in? Like, they don't know your account number, do they, for your retirement account?
No, no.
So the question was, from the W2, can, can the criminals get into your account, your, your retirement account? So what was transmitted on this file was the contributions that were made, the pre-tax amount. What you have to report on your, your taxes, reduces your taxable income for the year, that's what was reported, was just a total contribution amount. There was no account information in this file whatsoever. They don't even know which provider you might be using, because that, there's no identification of that in this file.
Okay, well, I'm full-time finally, okay?
Congratulations.
So, but I was part-time for a really long time. And my guess is that we have part-time?
I'm, I'm guessing that we have part-time people here and what you're saying for them is that we're gonna do both just for you, because you're part-time. You're not gonna have EAP, you're not gonna have that credit, whatever that will-
No.
So you said anybody who-
The EAP part.
So what I, what I'm trying to convey is, is that those who are involved and have state health insurance full-time have benefits already through what they have in place. I'm not committing or saying in terms of what the college is doing. We're questioning the EAP and the approach that I actually recommended to the staff was find out, you know, call in as the employee yourself. Your, your data has been breached. What information do they provide you? And then my approach is we can provide that to our employees. Just a call, that's one, one way.
But just a follow-up comment. We, we said the credit monitoring is available to every 2015 employee regardless of their status. It was on that slide. Full-time, wage, adjunct, and even student employees. That's the credit monitoring part. The EAP is a provisional thing for those employees who have state health insurance. So it's, at this point, we don't think, you know, that it's available. The, the other components of EAP are not available to part-time employees.
Right. I was just wondering, in sort of piggybacking from over here, that, you know, there's emotional support and I'm-
Right.
My guess is that if I have to wait 60 days or whatever, 120 days for, for a tax return, that's not going to keep food off my table. But with a lot of these part-time people, that could.
Right.
It seems to me that, that they had no, no doing in this.
Mm-hmm.
And yet they may be suffering more than full-time.
Yes.
And so we need, I think as a college, to do something, you know, I can call my EAP and randomly say, but they can't.
Right.
But to have something set up for particularly part-time wage or people, adjuncts, you know, who are just scraping by, and they just aren't lucky enough to have a full-time job.
Yeah.
Then this is a huge thing.
Sure. Well, and can, I, I don't know what, what the state, what the EAP provisions allow, but-
We've contacted the EAP. We need to follow up with the EAP. And then if, if there's, there's, what's been indicated in the past, when we have contacted EAP about services for part-time employees, is that there's a charge to the agency. So we need to-
Research.
That's something that, that I need to discuss with, with E.P. Malloy and the President.
Right.
Just as a small point of clarification, I've been asked to clarify that we do have work studies that have received W2, so work studies need to be aware of it as well. I've got a couple of-
Work studies are-
I was gonna say when I was a worker.
Or are they student workers? See, that's the difference.
Some of them may use different, I don't know, I worry about making the distinction because they may not officially be classified for us, but in their brain, they might consider them as work studies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If they got a W2, they were a student workers. They may use the word work study, but they were student workers. Work study is a federal program.
So they're using the wrong-
Yeah, right.
Let's go back to this gentleman here. I was actually work studying now officially a employee.
Okay.
So I don't, do I need to worry about that then? I mean, do they have some questions you can ask?
In terms of the EAP?
I mean, I got a W2 as a work study.
Yeah.
As a work study?
Yeah.
Well, payroll tells me work study, work study under the federal work study program, do they get W2? They're not, they're not considered an employee.
Of the college.
But for sure, any work study, we got a W2.
Please.
So, no, work study, you should not receive a W2 for, and therefore, and therefore-
Are you a student worker or a work study student under the federal work study program?
Federal work study student. I was federal work study student.
Okay.
For all of 2015.
All of 2015. We're, we're definitely gonna look into that, but regardless, anyone who was on this file will receive or has received some type of notification and will be included in the services that Phyllis is in the middle of negotiating. So we'll, we'll look into the work study student worker confusion, but everyone on the file will receive the same type of coverage in terms of what's been discussed.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, so we're working with 60 to 120 days for our return, correct?
That's what the IRS has indicated, that it takes between 120 and 160 days for them. If the person is due a refund to-
Yeah, cause I haven't filed yet, so if, say mine is taken, what's the recourse then there? Is it, is it gone forever or is it?
No, from, from what we've been told, the IRS, if you're due a refund, you will get a refund. All right? However, and that would be, of course, expected by the IRS, if you owe money, they want it now.
Right.
So, you know, they're, they, of course, but, but, but from what we've been told, that they will work with the individuals whose tax refund was compromised and to issue a refund. It's just gonna take a lot longer. Right. But, but you know, as what Sally was saying, the, the danger in this is, is that a wage employee or a student worker, they don't have a lot of leeway to be waiting. If they were intending or expecting a refund, that's a delay of several months before they get that money. But that's where the EAP comes in. Yes?
This document, you see the source of the breach, are the letters that are going out being generated from the, all of the addresses, the names and addresses, because it seems to me that that would cover such an everywhere.
Okay. Can you repeat the question?
If the W2-
If the W2 and the breach is this document that contains this information of all of the employees, wouldn't it, are the letters that are being sent out being generated from this document? That would encompass, encompass all of the addresses, employees, whether they're work studying full-time or whatever.
Yes, we took the, the exact file, got the addresses from that file. So everybody that was on that file gets verification.
But let me ask this question now. I, I don't know the answer. So this file, did that file, when it was uploaded, contain addresses?
We merged it.
You did, okay, so that's a clarification. That was not contained in the data that was uploaded. When we generated the letters, we did a merge file from the employee record where we do have the addresses with that wage file. All right, that's different than this information, the addresses were not included in this email. Tom?
If some of us get lucky this time around and don't get breached this time, but say three or four years from now, they use our social security numbers, create credit cards and file taxes, are we protected for that?
Well, currently, from what we have been told, the credit monitoring will be, Phyllis is negotiating the length of time. Officially, originally, they offered one year. She said, "We need more than one year." So they're working with, I don't know, with whom they're working to negotiate. We may end up having to pay that part, you know, from, and we can't use public dollars for it, so we'll have to find a way to find monies to cover that. But, but as a minimum of a year, likely two years through the service, this Beasley service, beyond that, we don't know at this time. Yes?
It seems to me that everyone is getting a little confused about when you requested for TCC employees W2s that the breach, that's different from the credit cards, you know, like that's something you would have to ask like the credit bureaus?
Mm-hmm.
So it's totally separate. So it seems like everyone's kind of putting it together, you know what I mean?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding.
Like, okay, the breach was on TCC employees W2s, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, now, a couple of people were asking about like, how can I get my credit card protected and all that stuff? That's different.
It, it is, but it's related. And you know why it is related? Because on this form that was uploaded, on that data, it included the social security number. And social security numbers can be used by criminals to open up accounts.
All right, so I'm not sure people become part of the credit bureau in that sense for the credit card portion?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, when, when you go on, online to the three credit bureaus and you put in the, any one of the three, because they will report that information to the other two, so they'll do that as a service, you will be asked for some verification of who you are and then you will include in their question, questionnaire, and that will speak to that you may have been the victim of a identity theft, not credit theft or a breach, an identity theft. And then the identity theft is what, or the identity using a social security number can, could be used by criminals to open up accounts and loans and things like that. So it is correlated and, and-
Correlated, but at the same time, so, I mean, not that they shouldn't ask these questions to you, but at the same time, that's a question also for the credit bureaus.
Yes, correct.
Not just all of them.
Correct, yeah.
Or-
Right. And, and remember, on the email that I sent to you, there are several other things. A report to the FTC, file it. The other one is the IRS, what is it called? It's 1104, no, not 1104.
So 130 IRS.
Affidavit.
Okay, some kind of an affidavit to the IRS. Fill that out. I, I printed it out. I couldn't figure out how to get my signature on it and everything, so I printed it out and I'm gonna fill it, you know, complete it this weekend. Really, take, take those precautionary measures. It's in your best interest to cover all of your bases. Yes?
Two, two parts. Do we know what kind of file was uploaded and also were 1099s included in it?
No 1099s.
I mean, this is an unusual, I mean, Target, Best Buy, we read about those and followed their tracks. I mean, these hackers that wanna fleece the country, they're not fleecing you as much. I mean, we're violated because they got something of ours. But I got violated last year from OPM and what they got was every record that the FBI and, and intelligence got when I got my top secret clearance. In other words, everything about me in the military was in that file and it's gone. And so I, you know, I, I said, "Man, I really, I feel bad about that." And my wife said, "Well, so what are they gonna do with it? I mean, they know about you." Well, you know how scammers work, hackers. They want your birthday. They want your social security number, because with a birthday and a social security number, they can get into your social security account, they can get into your retirement account. If they've got three or four different things about you, they can get in there. So this time, they got your social security number. Yes, they could attempt to get credit cards under that and this light block and all these other monitoring services. I'm telling you, they more or less try to get you to buy other services and other things. I haven't found them, I mean, it's nice to have, to know, but they're not gonna stop these people from fleecing you. And you're not gonna get fleeced. What's gonna get fleeced is the bank who has to cover that note, the IRS. You're gonna have to work it out with them, but my friends that work at TCC, some of them have two IRS- of them have two IRS accounts going right now and one of them is in San Diego. And one of them's here and the IRS is using current address and trying to match up who is who. And they ask the IRS, "Well, you know, what are you going to do? Going to arrest this guy?" No, it's not our job. That's somebody else's job. Right? So what's happened? We're getting fleeced, not us. Voter fraud, you get people fleecing banks and credit cards. Who pays for that? We all do. A lot of IRS, 400 times last year, $4 billion fleeced.
Right.
And who will end up, at 400 times, who's going to end up paying for that? We all are.
In the end.
So what we have to know and awareness is more than MOAT training, which is a minimum requirement to know what the words mean. It's how does this all work? Why did, you need to know a little bit more about hacking because this happened to you and how it happens at your home, how it happens at your work, and what they're looking for. These databases are sold back and forth through agencies that are in the underworld, if you so to speak, and they collate this stuff. They'll get your birthday from another hack and they'll use it to fleece everybody. So should you, you know, it's not all gloom and doom. What we have to do is go to places like Target, go to places like Best Buy and find out, you know, yeah, they got, they got fined by the FCC for, hate to say it, but, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. FCC fined them, our own government did, for the breaches. That could happen to us too. I, you know, I'm just saying, I don't see why FCC wouldn't fine us if we were not in compliance with something.
Right.
So, so we know this, but have we gone back to those companies and says, "Okay, what's your profile now?" How, you know, because, you know, if you're an organization and something like this happens, if you're violated, you're a strong organization when you recover and you do it, like you said, transparently, this is our new profile, this is how the new TCC operates, the new government operates. We know you're out there, but we have things in place. We're more aware and our network is more aware. And finally, I wanted to say this about network. We have a network that is all-inclusive. And I've always said that's dangerous and I'll tell you why. When I go to Hilton and I check in to Hilton and I get a room, they give me a password for the internet. There is no way that that hotel is connected to financials at Hilton. There is no way that it's connected to HR at Hilton. So I can get that wireless signal and I could be a hacker and I could hack maybe my neighbor if they're on the internet at the same time, I could hack them. I can get their stuff out of their computer, but I can't hack Hilton at TCC. Our emails, or not emails, but our wireless can be hacked into the service. And the reason we have that policy is, you know, is a philosophical reason. I'm sure the DCC has brought in a lot of pressure on us to do that, but, and that's why we have a 12-step program. When you're on wireless, you have to log in and verify all this stuff. But we did it because enough people, a few, felt that they, when they're teaching from campus to campus, they needed to get access into their personal files so that, not personal files, their saved drives so that they can use teaching material back and forth. Now, I wouldn't change a whole system just because of that. That's a low risk. Like the schools here, you cannot hack, hack into their HR and the finance. And in my building, we have the city, you cannot hack because they have police records, they have, and they weren't going to trust a building that teaches hackers.
Yeah.
With their stuff. So their wirelesses are not connected. But I want to warn you guys, ours are. I can sit, I mean, hackers can sit in the parking lot and get on our wireless. And if they're smart, and, and I recommend that, there's some great shows now, like on HBO, Showtime, there's a show called Wired, and every week they talk, they interview hackers and they talk about how they get into people's stuff. And I watch that show very, it teaches me a lot more than MOAT did. You know? And prepares me for the world. So you can get live lock and all these credit reports, that's great. OPM offered me it indefinitely.
Okay.
So, but I'm just saying, if they, if they want to fleece you, they may get bumped, it may affect your credit score, but all you're going to get with these services are, "I know somebody's trying to hit me."
Yeah.
Nobody's going to arrest anybody, just like the IRS. I can't, I'm not going to go after them.
Sure, right.
So what's happening, people are getting citizenship illegally, they're getting voter rights illegally, they're fleecing us with IRS, false tax reform. They can get into your government files, obviously, and they know a heck of a lot about you if they, you can hack. In 10 years, these guys, these men and women are going to know everything about everybody that's electronic. They just will. Unless we use this experience, intellectual capital, sharing best practices, and, and toughen up, then I think we can do that. But, but just finally, going after the person or the super, I mean, I was in a squadron in the Navy and we had crashes, it was terrible. But we couldn't put the airplanes back together after they crashed. So we had to be honest about what happened and, of course, it's either human error or mechanical failure. Most of the time, it's human error. So what are you going to do? Well, you get everybody together and you learn and, you know, like I said, it's not off in their heads. I mean, that's not, that only brings more fear than, you know, we got. So anyway, that's just, I wanted to share that with you folks because I don't think that these things you get for free or indefinitely is going to help much anyway.
All right. Yesterday, somebody put it, I think, very, very poignantly, an employee at the Norfolk campus, she said, "It's like somebody came into your house and they stole the money out of your pocket."
Or they came into your house and you don't know what they stole.
That's true. You don't even know, that's right, even...
And you're not going to know for making a mug when you get in that box and go, "Whoa."
Yeah. That's, that's a very good point, yeah. I think that, that was very, very poignant for her to make that comment. And while we were talking, I was just thinking of something else. Oh, I've reached out to, we have two certified cybersecurity faculty members at our college. I've asked them for help to work with OIS and with the VCCS to review, you know, what are the priorities and again, the human training. And Ken has figured out a way how to get something quickly into the vault of the MOAT training, very specific. I think it's important for people, you know, read that, that link to the IRS alert and everything. When I read that, it was exactly what happened to this employee. Had the employee seen that the day before when the IRS alerted them, it probably wouldn't have happened. But it's the human, human element that needs to be addressed, then the policy review, then the technology to change all of those practices. And then the other thing is the access to sensitive information and how we share information internally, you know? And if the wire, wireless network is a very breachable, easy breachable thing, then that's something we have to address.
Or find out, right?
Or find out, yeah.
But we need to be stronger, right? I mean, that's...
Absolutely.
This is going to make us stronger.
Yeah, yes.
Are we the only colleges out here?
We have been told by the VCC...
Have you been to state the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. The question was, are we the only college that was, was targeted? No, we've been told by the VCCS that several of the other community colleges received the same inquiry.
Did they fall for it?
Pardon me?
Did they fall for it?
Um, I don't think so. I don't think so.
We're the biggest in that, we're going to get the news, right?
Yeah. But, but, you know, UVA got hit last year, similar scam, Centerra Hospital, several others. Yes?
Should we impact the Batten Center to be set up for the help? Many of us are overwhelmed with the process.
Yeah. I mean, it was just an idea. I, I, again, I think it's a great idea. The question was, Ken, when will the Batten Centers be set up to do that? I'll ask that, Ken, and who would be the most appropriate to be working? Tom, you're in the...
Doctor DeBarr.
Pardon me?
Doctor DeBarr.
Daniel, okay, all right. So as soon as we can do that, have you gone online to fill out your credit monitoring?
Yeah.
Okay, so you've, you've done, done the easiest part. So within, probably by Monday, the Batten Center should be up and running. We'll get a communique out to everybody.
Do you even mind the Batten Center right now are doing faculty course evaluations? And the next week or so, we're printing them out, stuffing envelopes, getting in the faculty, so we're busy doing that.
I know, but I think this is urgent enough that we should find resources to help our employees, you know? So I, I'm empathetic to what you're doing right now, but I think it's more important right now, we'll find avenues to supplement what you're doing to give access to our employees for that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Yes, Cal?
Ma'am, I have one other thing to point out. Now, IRS asked you to either fax or mail the fraud form to them. Do not fax it. Okay? Fax is not secure. Mail it to the IRS. Do not fax it.
That's interesting.
In my opinion, going over copper wire is much more secure than sending them a PDF over the electronic internet. You know, to me, if banks used to do this, they use copper wire, that's why you can't, you couldn't hack into banks.
Faxes are no longer copper wire. They go out virtually, once they leave, once they leave here and get out.
Okay, so any digital, what we're saying, any digital, right?
Yeah, okay. So interesting that the IRS would say you could do it by fax. Several employees have reported that they've called the IRS, same question, different answers. Same thing on the FTC. So, you know, clearly, there's a lot of confusion out there and I think it speaks to the sophistication of the scam that even the IRS agents do not know. Somebody said they called the FTC, finally was able to talk to a human over Easter weekend and, and got basically no help. On Monday, things were very different. So, you know, we, we can't even completely predict nor count on what the IRS shares with us. Yes?
I got back in town Monday after teaching, I filled out the form, all supporting documentation. I took it, UPSed it overnight to IRS and I was notified from the IRS this morning that they had received.
Okay.
Instead of one.
Good, that's good. So they do acknowledge it apparently. That's great, yeah. So again, please keep the questions coming. We'll research everything, we'll, we'll get it back to you, post it on the FAQ. Try to do it within a 24-hour period, you know, that's not a guarantee because some, some of these are so, so complex, but we'll do our very, very best to answer your questions. Also, once the call center is up next week, you know, you should be able to get quicker information, quicker referrals, because these are people that are trained in all of this. I mean, we're, we're learning as we're going along here because none of us are prepared and, and, you know, know how, how to do this kind of stuff. Yes?
If we are a victim of our withholding being reimbursed to the criminal, do we have to pay that amount of money, like on April 15th?
No, no, no.
It just gets...
The only thing that the IRS wants is the money that is due to them if you had not expected a refund. So if you had to pay, they want it by April 15.
Right.
But if a refund was issued to the criminal, you don't have to pay for that.
But what if that was part of the money you were going to pay in total to the IRS for your 2015 taxes? The withholding was part of the money that, you know, that you...
I don't think you'll be responsible for paying that to them. No, no, no.
No, they're going to fleece the country though, that's fleecing the whole system by $4 billion.
Yeah. But you personally will not have to pay that. Yes, exactly. All right, other, other questions? Any questions that you want to ask now? Yes?
Isn't that a question, it's a comment?
Yes.
If you fill out the documentation to have your credit account looked at and it's sent to the other credit monitoring agency, it takes 24 hours. The alert shows that...
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yes, good point. When, when, yes, when, when you do go on the, any one of the three credit bureaus, you fill out the form for one, it takes 24 hours for the acknowledgement and, and for it to take place with the other credit card companies. All right? Last call on this topic. What time is it? Quarter after 3:00. Let me ask this question, Kurt, do we, should we go on or are you guys all burned out and whatever we have to say on accreditation and the budget and enrollments? You're, you say, "I've had enough, that's okay by me." If you want to go on, we'll go through the agenda? No?
About the budget?
The budget? You want to hear about the, all right?
We'll, we'll skip the accreditation for now.
Okay.
They'll hear that and we'll talk about enrollment and budget.
Okay.
That's important.
Right, okay, all right, great, good. Then let's move on to, let me finish that.